I'd like to call the City of Manashe County Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the play of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Grady.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Sevenick.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Here.
Alderman Kruger.
Here.
Alderman Taylor has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If anyone wishes to come to the microphone and provide comments, you have a five-minute time limit to do so.
Of course, the Racine Street Bridge. I'm going to make my comments quick. There's been a lot of miscommunication on this, and I'm just going to say a few things. What I've heard is that it's a done deal. You know, the DOT is going to do what the DOT wants to do. If that were the fact, why are you here tonight? Why did the mayor feel it necessary to veto the last council vote? Furthermore, back in 2015, Bill Bertrand was quoted as saying, "The DOT will give considerable weight to Manashe's preference." So it does matter. It's not a done deal. Your vote matters. And because there is not a full council tonight, I'm requesting that this item be postponed until you have a full council, because it's that important. Secondly, again with the bridge, I have a copy in the email that was actually in the packet back in 2015 from a resident from Headwaters. That group was extremely vocal when these alternates came about because of the impact it would have on their homes, their neighborhood, and their quality of life. Dated September 22nd, it says, "Hi, Don. Thanks for getting the drawings for the Broad Street intersection. Together for our Headwaters Association meeting tonight. Eleven of our 12 owners are present and reviewed the four options. We have unanimously agreed to endorse option number four, allowing two-way traffic on Broad Street." That's a deal. The mayor made a deal with the owners and the association to get them to endorse option J.
Mrs. Taylor, do not put words in my mouth. I provided them the options.
Options that were never made public. I've never seen any options for the Broad Street intersection. I don't know if members of the council have ever seen options for the Broad Street intersection. This kept Headwaters quiet. They then changed from being opposed to option J to being in favor of it because they want two-way traffic. Now, I myself also want two-way traffic, but for years, I've been told, "No." Former Alderman Dan Zalinski fought for years to get two-way traffic. Studies have been done. Former Director Mark Radke wanted nothing to do with changing that to two-way traffic. Tom Montour, in the most recent study, recommended that it stay one-way. So if you want open and transparent government, that's one thing. If you want the mayor to make the decisions on the city and cut deals, that's your decision. And that's why we need a full council here. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one, we'll move on to the report of Department head staff consultants. Do we have a motion to receive the minutes and communications? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to receive minutes A through H and communications or communication I.
Is there a second?
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question on item Jeff for the Park and Rec Board. I noticed Brian is not here tonight, so I don't know if anybody else can answer this. There's a discussion about having an RDA grant that'll be submitted this fall for the Gilbert site. Is that something that'll be coming before the council? Will that be explained at all at the council level?
We would need permission from the council to accept a grant to do something like that. So yes, it would come before the council, just as Nancy usually brings hers before the council and says, "This is what we're planning to do." And do we have the council's support to apply for something like that? And we could ask Brian to come before you earlier and just tell you what he's been working on.
I'd appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to address the Park and Rec Board minutes, and I'm doing this for the television so that other folks out there know what's going on. As you know, Mayor, I've held a free teens basketball tournament now for 23 years along with the City Park and Recs Department. There are plans to take away the basketball court at Hart Park and put in only two half courts, with one of the rims being lower, which I find to be troublesome, because what you're going to end up having is, I believe personally, people who are borderline able to dunk, dunking and dunking, and eventually damaging that very expensive equipment out there. It is very important in our community. I'm somewhat involved with the City of Manashe's high school. I'm a sponsor of the high school basketball team. They haven't been very successful, and the worst thing we want to do is take away a full court, and it's one of the more active courts. The reason I brought up my tournament thing is that I quizzed the kids, and they were in absolute shock that this was going to happen. They're really strongly opposed to it. I'm opposed to it, but I respect what the park wants to do. I respect that, I believe, the police department feels that somehow this will take away from certain activities at the park, which I don't understand that part of it. But I wanted to bring it to the community's attention. Every Sunday, there's a group of guys, my age and younger, of course, that continue to play basketball every Sunday, and there's between 15 to 20 guys that play, and they've been doing that for now four years, full court, and you're going to take that away. And I'm not happy with that decision, and I would hope that the park board review this. I was hoping that our park director would be here. I'm sure he's on vacation, with vacation period happening at this point. So I just wanted to bring it to the community's attention and the council's attention.
Alderman Collier?
Also, I live two blocks from that park, so I go by it a lot, and the full court does get used, and I hope that maybe they could go back and look and keep the full court, and if they think they need a half court for the younger kids, find a way to get a half court. On the 4th of July, I went by there three times, and over a period of three hours, they were still playing basketball, and it looked like some pretty serious basketball, so I hope the park can reconsider that and maybe keep that at that park. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The consent agenda has four items this evening. The council minutes from June 19th, the personnel committee recommendations from June 19th, to the updates to the Personnel Policy Handbook, anti-harassment policy, and a recommendation that all regular employees and elected officials are required to attend the anti-harassment and diversity training and/or participate by watching the video and signing a statement acknowledging the participation. And the NINA-Manashe Joint Finance and Personnel Committee recommendations from June 27th, recommending replacing of the vacated firefighter position as soon as possible. Does anyone wish to have any items separated this evening? Alderman Kruger?
I'd wish to separate number three.
Any other items? Do we have a motion to approve the remaining items? Alderman Sevenick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for the council to approve consent agendas one, two, and four, as stated by the mayor.
There's a motion and a second? Could we have a roll call vote, please? Mr. Steve.
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item three is the anti-harassment and diversity training. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I make a motion to approve consent agenda item number three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Alderman Kruger?
Yeah, I just, I wanted a little bit of clarification on this. When we voted on this in committee about everybody signing the anti-harassment and diversity training, it's an online course, and I just want to know with the elected officials having to sign it, what's the penalty if an elected official doesn't sign or doesn't do it?
There wouldn't be a penalty, but you would have the option to create a penalty if you wished to create that penalty as a board. I would make note that the following people have not completed the training, and you're not signing anything other than that you participated is what you're signing.
Right.
And these aren't online. These are actual in-person training sessions, and then we record them for the employees that aren't able to make it on one of the two dates that we're having it. So we have it on the 23rd and 24th of August, correct? We don't have specific times yet, but if you can't make it, we'll have a video of it. You can come in anytime you want to, or whoever that would be, to watch the video and participate in that manner.
Okay. There was no wording ever discussed in what that piece of paper was. I mean, is it going to be as simple, you watch the video, that's it? And all that? Because I hate to see something like this turn political against someone later on down the road, if it ever went that far.
No, it's not going to say, "I swear that I agree with everything that's in the video."
Okay.
All that kind of stuff. I don't remember what it said. I think last time it was just a sign-in sheet. Correct? Can you?
Yeah.
Typically, that's what we do for everyone else, a sign-in sheet.
Sign-in sheet.
This person attended.
All right. Thank you.
Sure. Any further discussion? Alderman Sevenick?
I missed the first part of the questioning. Was this a requirement of CivMec?
It's Civ... Between the captain?
It is a requirement of CivMec to have, we have to do it every three years, and we, of course, can force employees to participate. We are not able to force elected officials, and neither is CivMec able to force elected officials. So...
Because we have found out that that was the case, and I wanted to make sure, because I could not remember from the administration committee if we were told we were required to, also to, there was another point on that. It escapes me right now. Oh, that this is not necessarily a requirement of all city employees either, only departments' heads?
No. It's all employees.
All employees?
All, um...
I thought just management-type employees.
No. It's all regular employees.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for June 22nd through June 29th. Is there a motion?
I guess nobody else is going to.
I'll make the motion to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of 6/22/17 through 6/29/17 in the amount of $1,503,967.62.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item two is the beverage operators' license applications for the 2017 through 19 licensing period. There are two groups. One, the recommended for approval, and then there are three people that are recommended for denial. If we could have a motion for those recommended for approval at this point? Not everyone at once. Alderman Kruger?
Okay. Let's see if I can do this without screwing it up like last time. Okay. I'm going to make the motion to approve the Class A liquor license application for Shopko Stores Operating Company. Which one am I doing?
Number two.
Item two.
See, there I got it again.
This one right here.
I prematurely crossed it off. Okay. Cancel that out. I'll start over. I recommend for approval and advancement, the beverage operator license application for 2017 to 2019 licensing period for the June 29th, 2017.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the beverage operators' license applications on the June 29th memo recommended for approval. How does that sound? And there was a second? Any discussion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When does the operating period start? Is it July 1st?
Yes.
So did we negatively affect the folks on this list by not meeting until July 5th?
I'm not sure. Do you have a comment on that, chief? We do these periodically throughout the year, so it depends on when they applied.
Potentially, yes. These folks either are new applicants or renewal applicants, and they start getting notification in the end of April that their licenses are coming due. So if they missed the deadline to get on the last council meeting, yes, that's why you would have a larger group still today. So in essence, they could have gone three, four days without being able to bartend by themselves or in a store by themselves. But in most cases, they're working with another employee that might be licensed at that point, and the license holders are aware of that.
That's what I was afraid of, and I knew we had done lots of these, and I was kind of surprised to see this list and that we're acting on it on July 5th, when I thought it was July 1 was the effective date. So, okay, but these folks, they were just late in their applications, and when were these applications actually due for, to make it? Were they notified when they were going to be due to make it by the July 1?
Yeah, they were given, all the license holders, the establishments received a letter as to, I don't remember the particular date, but about a week before the last council meeting, saying that they needed to get their stuff in by then.
Okay. So they were aware of the date, then? Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
So there are three licenses recommended for denial. The first one is Cynthia, excuse me if I butcher your last name, Clotier. I don't know, how bad did I do?
You did perfect.
Okay, good. So typically, we would give you an opportunity to tell us a little bit about why, well, tell us what you'd like to tell us, and then we can ask some questions.
Well, talk as best I can. I have cancer, and I've had eight strokes, so I can't talk very well. I had a license for a gas station on 76 back in 2011, '12 and '13, and I applied for Winchester, and I got that license mailed to me. I've done, I have some felonies from the past, which has been 13 years ago, and I pursued my bachelor's and my master's, but then came down with cancer, so I can't work now. I'm on permanent disability. So I just applied so I could volunteer, possibly work like one day a week or something to get out of the house.
So does anyone have questions for Miss Clotier? Alderman Collier?
So more or less, you're looking, I see your past, and I'm always, you know, going to the other side on this a lot, that you had some felonies. Tell me about your felonies. I hate to be crummy, but where do you think you went wrong, or how did you get, you know?
Bring your own wrong people?
You got a couple felonies 10 years ago, 10, 11 years?
Yeah, 10, 12, 11.
Would you mind if we...
Wrong people?
I can't ask it that way. I can't ask it that way.
Oh, you can't?
No. Actually, if I could just interject, the, I did look over the convictions here that are listed. The last one was in 2006. It, according to Wisconsin statutes, would be too far in the past really to consider unless there was an ongoing pattern, and then you could go back to that. But the last conviction was in 2011. There's been nothing since then, and of course, here we are in 2017. So I just wanted to let the council know that as far as the felonies are concerned, they really are too far in the past to consider because there isn't a continuing pattern of violations.
So then, with that information, then this information I have here is not correct?
It is correct.
Which one are you referring to, Alderman Collier?
Well, I'm looking at this, and it says that you got the United...
On the back.
Yeah.
And that is just based on what the policy is, because the statutes do indicate that if someone has a felony that is not pardoned, that that is, and it's substantially related to the license for which a person applies, that that cannot be considered. But there's also another section in the statutes where it has to be, you know, related in time as well, so that if there's a gap period of time such that a person has changed over the years, then that would not be appropriate to consider that. Now, if there was a pattern that continued, you could go back, you know, if someone had a pattern every, I believe, I remember we had someone that every three years, they had a conviction. And so it went back maybe 15 years, because every three years.
But in this case...
And so we went back pretty far because of that.
But in this case, to me, it doesn't look like this is history.
It's too far in the past.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I don't think anybody can give me a name in a state that got pardoned by Governor Walker since he's been in. I know that for a fact, because I didn't get my pardon. Thank you.
I tried a cold.
Alderman Kruger?
Just a really quick summary, then. What is the main reason for the denial? Just because our policy has that wording in it about the pardon? That's the only reason for the denial? Thank you.
Alderman Sevenick?
I'm looking at the last misdemeanor, and of course, I'm going to go based on what you say, and that it wasn't necessarily you, but...
My son?
Well, I didn't want to get personal.
Oh. It's on his record. You can look it up.
And that it wasn't really you. So really, we're looking at the last thing that had occurred was actually in '06.
Correct.
So at this time, I'll move to allow for her to have her license.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Chief, did you want to add anything before we move on?
Not really. I will say this. We've seen literally hundreds of applications, and I do think it shows to Cynthia's desire and her change of ways of how she really took the time to outline to you what happened and the distance to it. The city attorney is exactly correct. If we had the latitude as a police department, I don't think this would have been one that we would have been concerned about a denial ourselves.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Thank you.
Okay. And I've, I've lost my spot here. There we go. The next person on the agenda is Robert Samp. Are you here this evening? If you'd like to state your case, and we could ask some questions following that as well.
Sure. I just wanted to say my manager, Mike, would have liked to be here, but he had other obligations he couldn't change. I do have a letter from him as well. I don't know if you would like me to read it, or, yes. "Sorry, I'm a bit nervous in public speaking. In regards to the licensing of Robert Samp to sell alcoholic beverages at Manashe Motomart, a Class A retailer in the City of Manashe, I would like to apologize for being absent for these proceedings. I very much wanted to be present to speak on Robert's behalf, but was unable to make alternate plans for my previous obligation. I have had the pleasure of working with Robert for the last three weeks. I am aware that Robert has a criminal past from our conversations regarding the City of Manashe Police Departments. For my recommendation, he been denied the opportunity to hold a liquor license in this community. I am unaware of the charges that has been brought against Mr. Samp in the past. We operate under a corporate structure in which I am not allowed to have any knowledge of that sort involved in my decision-making process when hiring. We do, however, subject all applicants to a background check, which Robert did pass and was deemed hirable by our Human Resources Department. In my time working with Robert, he has proven himself to be a responsible employee who is both eager and willing to go above and beyond to hold his employment with our company. After being involved in our hiring process for the last 14 years, I have found Robert's actual desire to excel at this position and make a good impression refreshing. With Robert, I see a young man who has reached a point in his life where he has more than accepted the faults of his past and is excited to right those wrongs, the best he can be by becoming a functional member of this community. He has a drive to provide for his family and, in my opinion, a genuine desire to succeed. I understand that Robert has a felony conviction on his record, and I also understand blanketing standards in licensing. Viewing a felony as a deniable attribute has its merits. However, I feel there are many cases where people have genuinely made poor choices, have done their time and service in a rehabilitation setting, and are again ready to become a contributing member of society. Speaking on our company, we take responsible selling seriously. We not only train to license our employees, but we retain yearly, retrain yearly. We are subject to law enforcement's things as well as independent alcohol and tobacco checks by groups such as the bars program, Wisconsin WINS, and the FDA. Regardless of time with the company, our only response to failed stings or determining our associates are not following ID check policy is termination. I am also required to spot-check each employee weekly through the use of the journal receipts and video surveillance to ensure they are properly following our ID check policy. I do not take being a responsible member of your city's business community lightly. Also, in monetary terms, having someone licensed that this business failed to follow procedure when selling alcohol and tobacco would be a massive blow to our profits. If I felt Mr. Samp was a threat to our business or the community in any way, I would not have encouraged him to speak to you in response to the recommended denial of his license. I have a feeling that Robert can be a productive, likable member of my staff here in at Manashe Motomart. Even if Robert were to part ways in the future, I believe having this opportunity will go a long way in helping him achieve and maintain gainful employment in the future and properly provide for himself and his family. I also have, I also believe giving people like Robert a proper chance to better their situation not only affects people close to them in a positive way, but it also affects their community in a positive way. Giving people stability and purpose goes a long way in helping them stay on the right path. I do plan on employing Robert regardless of the outcome. By having him licensed would open up his opportunity at working more shifts and being able to use this job as a way to support his family. I appreciate all of your time and consideration on this matter. Michael Vanderberg, Manager, Manashe Motomart, number 3411, 703rd Street, Manashe, Wisconsin."
Whoops, sorry. I didn't know if you wanted to share anything else before?
Um... I... I, I've made mistakes. And I, and I, the last one was driving without a license maybe three or four years ago. I have completed work at Step Industries as well in the past couple of years, as well as the AODA assessment and, and program at Theta Care on Midway Road with Linda. And I just, I just want to say, I, I need this.
Thank you. Attorney Captain, do you have some questions?
I read through your answers on the application or your responses to the questions on the application. And you did identify a felony offense and that was, correct me if I'm wrong, it's for cutting off a bracelet. You were under a bracelet?
Yes, I know.
And when, when did that occur? What year was that?
Two thousand and six, I believe.
Okay.
It was when I was eighteen, so I'm twenty-nine now, so two thousand and six.
Okay, okay. And that's what I was wondering, how long ago it was?
Okay.
And I believe there was a misdemeanor charge or conviction, correct?
Yes.
And was that before or after that felony offense?
That would have been after that, I believe.
Okay, and what, what year was that, do you remember? Or how close in time it was to the felony?
Maybe two or three years afterwards.
Okay. And so, the latest convictions you had, you indicated, I believe, pertain to a revoked license, driver's license, is that it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and that was several years ago?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Samp?
I take, I might have seen you there, so, you know, I don't know for sure. I do some business there. But you have a family now?
Yes, I have a two-year-old little girl.
And you live in Manasha?
I do, right on Broad Street.
And this is your income to take care of your family and do everything?
Yes, sir.
I hope we've taken consideration that and find a way to let this man continue to work his job. And with, with the letter from his boss alone says that he's really come a long ways. And I know how you struggle. I know the issues you deal with. So, I only wish you the best of luck. I hope we find a way to give you your license tonight.
Thank you, sir.
So you can go forward and hopefully end up being a manager there someday.
Thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor. Do you have anything pending right now?
No, sir.
When was the last time you were arrested for anything?
Today's two seventeen. I would say two thousand fifteen, two thousand, two thousand fourteen, between two thousand fourteen and two thousand sixteen. And that would be for driving on a revoked license.
And is that resolved at this point?
Yes, sir.
You have a driver's license?
Yes, sir.
At this point? So, you think that was two or two and a half years ago? Do you have anything on that, Chief?
I can help fill in the time dates if you want. The bracelet cutting off, that was a date of offense of December of two thousand six. The possession of THC was actually just a few weeks after that. So, it was actually further back than what Mr. Samp has indicated. So, really, of those criminal charges, it's similar to the situation with Cynthia that you heard from earlier. The operating after revocations, the two convictions, the dates of the offense were in April of fourteen and December of two thousand fourteen. There's been nothing since then. And I can also confirm that he does have a current valid license in the state of Wisconsin.
Alderman Kruger, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so basically, this is the same as the other one where it's the, the policy that's kicking in on the...
The chief?
The timeframe part?
Very similar to what the city attorney explained in the last one. Statute and the policy indicates that if you have a felony, that you're technically not allowed to have it unless there, unless you can show that pattern of continued issues from that felony that took place.
And, and your...
The subjectiveness of it is substantially related. And that's kind of what this board assesses, is, is it substantially related?
Right. And in your opinion, it's pretty much similar to the previous one then, as far as your feelings towards it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Savick?
I'll move at this point to give Robert Samp his license so he can conduct regular business at Motomart.
So, motion and a second for approval. Is there any further discussion? Do you have more, Stan?
Well, yes, I do. I just, I want to wish you the best.
Thank you. You guys don't know how much that means to me.
Prove us.
Right.
I will.
Okay, seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Debbie, would you like the letter too for the record? Could we have the copy of the letter? The third recommendation for denial is for Robert, Robin George. Is Robin here this evening? Let's see, Robin here this evening. Is there a motion on this action? What's in the packet? Is there, is there a motion? Or did you want to comment, Chief? Or attorney? Oh, we're on Robin George? I didn't, I believe no. So, and she just, the attorney just said the description of the offenses isn't very clear on the application. I'm all confused which one's which now.
Sure. It was actually confusing reading his, his criminal past as well. And I do apologize to the council. Lieutenant Mawley's obviously taken over this position in the past. And Alderman Nichols called me on this earlier today, and she's exactly right. We have generally listed the offense date in the letter as well as the offense, which I think can kind of help some of your decision-making or questions you may want to formulate prior to coming to the meeting today. And that was omitted from these letters today, so I do apologize for that. But I'll fill in the blanks on this one. I'm not a hundred percent clear as far as looking at his record, but there was a possession with intent to deliver, which appears to be dismissed off his record back in May of two thousand two. Things seem to be pretty clear until two thousand fifteen, or yeah, two thousand fifteen in January, he was convicted of a possession of marijuana. Then in May of two thousand fifteen, he was charged with possession with, possession of marijuana as well as felony bail jumping. He was convicted and some of those charges were read in together. So, he's convicted of both the first THC one and the second one. So, that was in May of fifteen of the, for that second offense. So, those would be kind of filling in the blanks, what we'd normally give you on a letter as far as where he'd be at at this point.
Would you want to comment, Attorney Captain?
Can you tell us, what is the felony? What was the felony conviction?
Because he was charged and convicted with possession of marijuana the first time, a second and subsequent offenses are felony. And because he was out on bond conditions apparently from the first one. It's something, it must have been related to the first one, so the multiple offenses, in essence. He was a convicted felon and he must have been out on bond for that second possession of THC charge when he was arrested again for THC. So, then he had the felony bail jumping because of the bond conditions he was out on the first one.
Got it, okay.
The best way I can read it.
Okay, great, thanks.
So, does anyone wish to make a motion? Alderman Kruger?
I'll make the motion to deny the alcohol operator's license to Robin George.
There's a motion a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Okay, now we're on Shopko. Alderman Kruger?
All right. I will make the motion to approve the Class A liquor license application for Shopko Stores Operating Company LLC for the premises at fifteen seventy-eight Appleton Road in Manasha. Chris Lutke, agent for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen licensing period.
So, motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item four is the Class B liquor license application for Empreis Brewing LLC, doing business at one ninety-eight and two hundred Main Street. Craig Zoltowski is here this evening. If anyone has questions for him. Is there a motion? Alderman Savick?
No, I don't want to make a motion because I'm a little confused by this one, only because usually there's a lot more information that is provided to us. And I believe I, and I read my packet early. I believe the clerk was going to update us before we did anything?
I'm sorry.
And, okay, so, yes.
Yes, as of the time that we were putting the packet together, all the inspections had not been done. The background checks had been done and that came back fine, no problems. And as of today, I've spoken with the fire department, the health department, and the building inspectors. And they've all given their approval on the, on the license. They just hadn't had a chance to get in there and get all of the final stuff done. So, there'll be the bar upstairs that they'll be working out of. And the area downstairs is being remodeled, but right now, they'll be licensing for the upstairs.
Okay. So, basically, we're looking at their, the upstairs will only be at this point workable. And, okay, that makes sense because I was really having issues because I was at the coffee shop today and they were still pulling stuff out and that. And I thought there's no way that this is complete and ready to go. So, I understand there's basically two bars in there. So, I guess I won't have a problem then making the motion for the Class B liquor license at this time for Empreis Brewing LLC.
So, motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item five is the mayor's veto of the common council action to remove alternate J and recommend alternative B as the preferred option for the Merseyne Street Bridge. If the council wishes to override this, it would require a two-thirds majority of the council itself. So, it requires six votes this evening. Alderman Savick?
Yeah, I think we have ourselves a unique situation today, especially that it's, you know, the mayor has a certain time period that he has to issue whether he's going to veto. And then, of course, the two-thirds majority needed. And then we have an absent member, which I, I agree with the Mrs. Taylor, that we should have a full council. This is too big of an issue for the history of the city of Manasha. It may not have a diff, an effect at all. But I still would like to postpone this matter at this time to the next council meeting.
Is there a second? There's a motion a second, and I forget if postpone, we can discuss or not? We can. Okay. Is there discussion? Alderman Collier?
Discussion at the next meeting, I think I'll be out of town. I'm sorry. I'm just being upfront with you.
Yeah, you should.
So, you know, decide what you gotta do and you can do the same thing again next meeting. But I think there's a fifty-fifty chance I'll be out of town. Sorry.
Any further discussion just on the action to postpone at this point? Alderman Benner?
I will probably be out of town as well. I don't, yeah, I don't have any motion over it. I'm just stating that, yeah, the seventeenth, I'm off on vacation as well.
If, if it's okay with the mayor, I would like, you know, I can, I wish I had known this. When is our meeting, after those two meetings?
August.
August seventh and then August twenty-first.
Like, if I may and if it's okay with the rest of the council, change my motion.
Why don't we just amend it?
Well, I didn't want to go through the whole process, but amend it to August seventh then, considering that that wouldn't be fair to Alderman Benner or Alderman Collier.
Just want to make sure that we have the right date here. Yes. It is the first Monday in August.
Okay.
So, there's a motion to amend the motion to August seventh? Was there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? The motion is amended. Is there any discussion on the motion as amended at this point? That's fine. Okay. You have a question? Go ahead.
Well, I have...
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your...
Oftentimes, these procedures are laid out in ordinance. So, would postponing this about, how is that contemplated in the ordinance?
Attorney Captain?
As I recall, the only thing that's in the ordinance has to do with the mayor having five days after the vote to indicate a veto. And there isn't anything... There isn't anything beyond that. It, it must be presented to the council at its next meeting, but there isn't anything to indicate that it would have to be voted on. I suppose if it was something that you had to vote on and otherwise it was going to disappear, that'd be one thing. But that isn't the case here. Thank you.
Alderman Collier, did you have?
As long as I'm on the understanding that eventually we'll have to vote on this. Does it mean now after we did this, that we're going to have to have a full council when we vote for this? Or eventually we could just, okay, thank you.
Seeing no fur...
Mayor, I was just trying to accommodate the other council members because, just because Alderman Taylor isn't here. And then Arnie made a point, he can't, may not make it, and Alderman Benner may not be able to make it. I just thought it would be fair to bump it up.
I don't have a problem with that. Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please? Well, we, we did the, the, so we had a vote on the amending, the original motion. Pam said we didn't really need it, but this was the motion as amended. Yes. We've got the clerk confused.
Motion secured on roll call six one.
Okay. Item L is appointments. We have two, the appointment of Kate Miller to the Landmarks Commission. Do we have a motion? Alderman Savick?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for your appointment of Kate Miller to the Landmarks Commission for the term of seven five seventeen to three one eighteen.
There's a motion a second. Any discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Yes, thank you. It's, I guess, kind of about the subject with appointments to these committees and boards. I think you were, you were going to include something in our next packet or it was...
You know what? I forgot.
Open positions and...
I forgot. I'm sorry about that. I'll try to make sure I get that out to you.
Okay.
Early this week yet.
Because I'm sure we all know people that would like to know about the open spots and maybe we know someone. Thank you.
It doesn't show what's actually open, though. So, yeah, I did say I was going to do that. I didn't. Seeing no... I'll blame it on that and the gray hair. Alderman Collier?
Could we put something like that on the, on the Manasha forum? I mean, like the thing that we have for the new...
We can put it on our website, too. There's openings in the following areas.
Sure.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The second appointment is the appointment of John Jacobs to the position of Administrative Services Director. And there is a memo in the packet. If anyone has questions, either the attorney or the human resources coordinator? Am I right? Okay. Could answer things? Any, or is there a motion? Alderman Collier?
I make a motion to appoint John Jacobs to the position of Administration Service Director.
And, but it also needs to say with the benefits as described in the memo.
Okay, with the benefits as described.
Okay. And is there a second? I don't... Okay. There's a motion a second. Any discussion? See, do you have some discussion? Ken, if you want?
I have it. Just so the public knows, I don't like, you know, it's one thing when we're, we have our information before us. But when the public watches, they're like, what was that all about? So, they'd like to know. And I believe that was Alderman Grady? Was it you?
Both of them were on the committee.
On the committee to the mayor and the city, no?
the school district, and myself.
And they did the interviews, and they are making this recommendation to the common council, a very important position with the city. It's a newer position. We had a wonderful person that was in that position that had some life decisions to make and moved on, but those, the added recommendations was a vacation of eight days, just minor things, and a vacation of 15 days the following year.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion secured on roll call seven zero.
Item N is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? If you could just state your name and address then, too, Craig.
Craig Zoltowski, 335 Lake Road. Just in regards to action item number four, I wanted to raise awareness to the city regarding a Wisconsin State memo requiring that craft brewers be forced to sell their beers to distributors and then immediately buy the back in order to sell them again in their tap terms. So if anybody is looking for more information or would like to sign a petition that I have for the state, I just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, is there a motion to adjourn? Not everyone at once. Alderman Kruger? I'll make the motion to adjourn. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.